Okay, thank you. Welcome to the city council meeting Monday, September 21st, 2020. Mr. Eddie, do you want to give some details on the computer real quick and then we'll get into our meeting?
All right, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So, welcome everyone. If you're online, attending virtually, we can see your names under panelists or under attendees. And when the mayor opens up public comments, if you raise your hand virtually, we'll recognize you in the order the hands were raised. You can just hover over your name or go to the bottom of the participant panel, and you should be able to get an op- see an option that allows you to raise your hand virtually. If you're on a cellphone, star nine should raise your hand and star nine would lower your hand. And for the council members, we do have a good number of members from the public here, and plus we have staff, we have city engineering, Cedar, we have our city attorney, our city administrator, our clerk, and myself, the public works director, along with the mayor in the room.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Eddie. With that, if we could have roll call, please?
Luther. Traxler.
Here.
Sutherland.
Here.
Sweeney. Sweeney.
Here.
Schwabs.
Here.
Merrill.
Here.
Solberg.
Here.
Schlue.
Here.
Erdman.
Here.
Summerfeld.
Here.
Okay, thank you. No special recognitions tonight. Approval of minutes, if anybody'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes, now would be the time to do so. Okay, Lee Schwabs, you got your hand up? Go ahead, please.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
A second.
Chad Schlue with a second. Thank you. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I see in the participants or attendees, there's a Jeff Luther.
Okay, thank you for noticing, Lee. We'll try to bring him in.
Trying to bring him in, we'll see if that's, if that's the real Jeff Luther.
The real Jeff Luther, please stand up.
Jeff Luther, can you turn on your camera so we know it's you?
Technology, it's good sometimes. How do you want to do this, Mr. Eddie?
Jeff, you're muted. Can you, can you, we're just trying to recognize it as Jeff Luther, council member, council member Jeff Luther.
What is downtime? You got a kitten? Oh, there's Jeff. Hey, Jeff.
That's Jeff, okay.
I got him, Jeff.
This is Chewy.
Hi, welcome, Jeff.
Hey, Jeff.
All right. Okay, now that we're moving forward, no public hearings this evening. Under public comments, public comments is a place where anybody can speak for three minutes or less on agenda items for the evening. We are going to stay close to the agenda, and the agenda items for the evening are, under new business, review of the 2021 Business Improvement District, request to purchase equipment for the community services building, review of quotes for retaining wall, establishing polling locations and budget transfers, followed by the mayor's report, communications and miscellaneous business claims licenses, and no closed session this evening. So, we won't be deviating from the agenda, we don't do that. I know that there was some announcement, somebody said there was announcement on the news or radio regarding masks. We are not, we are not covering masks this evening whatsoever. The city council had the opportunity last week to cover that issue, and it will not be covered this evening, and there is no immediate plans in the near future to cover masks. And I don't think anybody in this room likes wearing a mask, including myself. But just wanted to be clear so that the, when we open public comments, public comments is only for agenda items for the evening. So if you're here to talk about any of the items on the agenda, we welcome that very much. So that being said, we are, will open up the public comment portion of our meeting. So if anybody would like to speak on agenda items for the evening, please come up to the podium, give us your name and your address, and you can speak for three minutes, and we will hold, the first portion would be a 15-minute segment. And if it goes further than that, we will ask the council for an extension.
Mr. Mayor, Dustin Dubuque's got his hand up online.
Okay, Dustin, go ahead, give us your name and your address, and go for it.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yep, Dustin Dubuque, E5411, 745th Avenue, Menominee, Wisconsin. Yes, thanks to city council. As you all know, I'm Dustin Dubuque, the executive director of Downtown Menominee and/or Main Street of Menominee. You guys are going to be looking over our operating plan and some of the ideas we have for 2021. As with many of the nonprofits in the city, I'm sure many of them are going to come with subsidy requests this year that are probably over the general amount that they ask for every year. And in no way am I disregarding any of their troubles or situations due to COVID-19. I'm involved with many nonprofits in town, and I understand this is a struggle for all of them. So I'm just here to speak on downtown Menominee. And all the great things that we've still been able to do even through COVID, unfortunately, we will be taking a zero-dollar income from fundraising events this year. Unfortunately, the Community Cookout and many other events that we've been wanting to host this year are unable to happen because of COVID-19. But a couple of the things that we did do really well this year, Zimer G. Brewing won a state Main Street Award for best adaptive reuse for changing their facility so much from the former garage to a brewery. And many of you know Ted's Pizza won the Main Street makeover, which is a once-a-year award that's really big to get in Menominee to where they got a $10,000 match from the WEDC at the state level to put a bunch of renovations into their building. And of course, Jim and Kim went above and beyond this when it came to their renovations. But then the last thing that I really wanted to touch on is the one thing that I think downtown Menominee did this year that, forgive me if I'm wrong, I don't think anybody else in the city was able to do, and that was to give money back to those that were possibly in need or struggling during the shutdown, during quarantine. Our organization realized this when the businesses were shut down and small businesses were unable to operate in any way, shape, or form. My board of directors and myself decided to take $15,000 out of already small operating budget to give to the downtown businesses on a relief grant that we created. And then our board of directors thought that 15,000 maybe wasn't enough, so we wanted to spend three weeks of our own time. Many of them volunteers to raise further funds for the small businesses in the downtown. In three weeks, we raised another $9,000, and we were able to give out a total of almost $24,000, in which funded 17 businesses. Some of the businesses, you know, paid their rent, paid for parking, paid their utilities, paid for their merchandise, and some of them, you know, were able to use it to stay, to pay their rent for two months, which is something that downtown Menominee was able to do. So I would like you to take that into consideration this year when looking at the budget and looking at city subsidies, and just know that downtown Menominee is here for the city. We are here for the downtown, we're here for the community at large. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you, Dustin, for that piece of information. And we will be talking about the Business Improvement District operating plan here tonight, so appreciate that information. Again, this is a public comments, and we are going to go from online public comments to anybody in the room that would like to speak on agenda items for the evening. So at this time, then, I would call from anybody here that would like to speak on agenda items. Please give us your name and address, and you can speak for three minutes or less. Okay, we will come back to the audience. How about online?
Again, if you're online, just raise your hand virtually, we can, we'll open up your mic if you wish to speak.
Okay.
Not seeing anybody, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, anybody want to speak online on public comments?
Nope, there's one.
Okay. No?
Dustin, you already spoke.
He wants to speak again.
We can, has he got a separate item, maybe?
No, okay. Okay, I'll bring it back to the audience. If anybody'd like to speak on agenda items for the evening, we can do so at this time. Okay, last call for public comments. You, you would have to step up to the microphone, sir, and, and, and state your name and your address. And, and it's agenda items evening, okay. Yep, there you go.
Yep, my name is Justin Hunstuck. Address is E619 on 810th Avenue. That's Colfax. So I'm talking about agenda item number five, unfinished business. Seems pretty vague to myself.
There's nothing under unfinished business this evening, so.
Post on your website.
What's that?
Post on your agenda on the website.
Yeah, it's, it's unfinished business, but there's no items under unfinished business, so there won't be anything, no discussion under unfinished business.
Council statements, there will be nothing discussed under that.
Correct.
Thank you.
Sure. Okay, thank you, Justin. Anybody else online? Last call for public comments. Okay, we'll close public comments and move on with the rest of our meeting. Under five unfinished business, none. Under six, new business. Review of the 2021 Business Improvement District 2021 Operating Plan. I think Lowell, if you can bring us up to speed, and then we'll take it from there.
Quickly, the, the same document you've seen for many years is in the pack. This is their annual report that they need to send to the council for them to proceed with levying a bid tax in the fall when we come to that season. Their budget's in there, and as Dustin noted, they did ask for the same subsidy from the city, $20,000 at this point. But because of their relief grants, it may be coming to council when we get into the budget here in November, asking for some additional dollars. I indicated that everybody is looking for additional dollars and didn't know if that was going to be feasible. So, I know the city attorneys looked at the document, he sent his notification in that it was acceptable, so that was submitted. Typically, the council would accept this by motion, the 2021 Business Improvement District Operating Plan. And again, we can answer questions if council has any.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Prangie. That brings it back to the council. If you have any questions for Mr. Prangie, now would be the time, or if you'd like to make a motion to accept the document, go for it. Mary Solberg, you got your hand up?
She's muted.
I would like to make a motion to approve the, the Business Improvement District Plan for Main Street of Menominee for 2021 as presented.
Okay, thank you, Mary Solberg. Is there a second to that motion?
I second Mary's motion.
Okay, Randy Summerfield? Is that, was that? Okay, thank you, Mr. Summerfield. All right, any discussion? All in favor of said motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, thank you. Brings us down to six B, request to purchase equipment for the community services building project. Discussion and possible motion authorizing. Mr. Eddie?
Yeah, council members, the community service building project is going well. That $5.5 million addition to our public works, our community service garage, the walls are up. We're about 48% complete. In the budget for this project, within the $5.5 million is $250,000 for facility items to, not part of the construction, but equipment to support this project. And what's in your packet is a list of items that we got from the staff mainly, and from Bruce Heath, our community services superintendent. Total's just about $100,000 on equipment we think is necessary. At least right now, we have a sweeper, a floor sweeper, a new air compressor, tire changing machine, replacing the overhead hoist, which has been tagged out, a hose making machine, new lube dispenser system, some rolling stairs that we'll use to get access to mezzanine and for a truck wash, and then a phone system. And that total's just about $100,000. So before we purchase these things, we wanted to bring it to your attention and, and look for your support if you so choose to do so, and maybe field any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Eddie. Council, I'll bring it back to you. If you want to make a motion to approve, now would be the time to do so. Chad Schlue, go ahead, please.
Is old stuff being auctioned off or sold or traded in or anything like that?
The stuff that we can, that's workable, we will, we will auction off, yes, Chad.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, motion made to approve purchases. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second Chad's motion.
Okay, Ryland with a second. Any discussion? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Traxler.
Yes.
Sutherland.
Yes.
Sweeney.
Yeah.
Schwabs.
Yes.
Merrill.
Yes.
Solberg.
Yes.
Schlue.
Yes.
Erdman.
Yes.
Summerfeld.
Yes.
Luther.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Brings us down to six C, review of quotes for retaining wall repair south of Broadway Street Overpass. Discussion and possible motion of award. Kevin Engineer is here tonight. Kevin, if you could bring us up to speed on that, that'd be great.
Sure.
Talk into your microphone, too.
All right. So basically, we opened bids up last Wednesday for the UW Stout Retaining Wall Repair Project, and there's a memo that was provided for the council members. And if you look on the second page, you can see we received two quotes. One from Dell Construction and the other one from Skidsteer Guy. And way at the bottom, you can see Dell Construction came in at the low of $23,000 with Skidsteer at a little over $32,000. If you remember, Dell Construction is the contractor that was awarded for the city hall sign. City has had some experience with this general. Engineers estimate prior to bidding was just under 24 or 25,000, so it came in about $2,000 less. With that, we are recommending award to Dell Construction contingent upon receiving contractors' proof of performance bonding and then their insurance coverage.
Okay, thank you, Kevin. Is there any questions for Kevin regarding this?
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead, Chad.
Do we know why the existing wall failed?
Well, let Mr. Eddie answer that one.
Yeah, and just by way of introduction, Kevin Oyam's a city engineer from, from Cedar Corp., so he's first time at the meeting here. But the, the wall has failed, it just hasn't released from the, from that side of the hill yet. So it's, if you went on, if you're heading north on Broadway, just past the intersection on Crescent, and before you go under the pedestrian overpass, it's on your right-hand side on the east side of the street. And if you drive by there, Chad, you can see the wall's kind of separating away from the hillside. We don't think it's imminent failure, but it has failed to the point that we're getting water in between it, and we just, we'd like to fix this this fall.
So it's like kind of a design error, then?
I, I don't know if I'd call it a design error, it's, that bridge, that wall's been up there for.
Wall was installed in 1994. The area that, we've had one failure due to drainage on the north end of that wall. This is the second failure. This one is right by the, both some steam pits and some electrical manholes. So I think the tiebacks when they were installed were minimal in that location, so it's kind of just bowed out over the years with drainage and, and settlement due to gravity.
And Charlie, we were out there, moved, it's moved out, what, 18 inches, probably?
Yeah, there's a visible bow, it's curved out. And again, it's right by the steam pit there, and it's, part of that is because of the tiebacks that they put in the walls. You couldn't tie it back significantly there. And the tieback system has dramatically changed in, in that 25-plus years.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Any other questions or discussion? Go ahead, Ryland.
Yeah, so along Chad's line, there is, are those design improvements going to be made for better drainage and better tiebacks? And what's the life expectancy of this repair?
I'll turn that over to Charlie Jones.
We've designed to today's standards for the tiebacks. Again, there, there's a limited room there, but we will be tying it structurally back. We, Troy Peterson is our structural engineer, he's looked at it, he's worked with the retaining wall manufacturers. So it's going to be done to their standards. There is, there is drain towel behind it, we'll be looking at that when they take it out to see if that needs to be improved or if there's an issue with it. Life expectancy, this one's lasted 25 years, I would think it's going to last 25 or 30 years.
Okay, any other questions?
So, for council's information, this will be funded through the Tax Increment District, and it also includes one of Lowell's little pet projects, if you go down Sixth, at Sixth and Main Street. If you go on the other side, those capstones have failed too. So I think it's a $2,500 of this is to replace those. So that could be removed, but, but they have just over time also disintegrated.
There's a short retaining wall across, kitty corner across from Burger King. It's so close to the sidewalk that that gets, when they plow, salt gets splashed on it, and that salt's just eating that concrete cap up.
Okay, Nate, you got your hand up?
Yeah, if there are no further questions, I would, I would like to make a motion to award the bid to Dell Construction for the fixture replacement of the retaining wall for $23,000.
Okay, Nate, just to confirm, is that contingent upon performance bond and proof of insurance?
Yes.
Okay, Ben, is that adequate? Okay, thank you for the motion. Is there a second to Nate's motion? Chad Schlue, go ahead, please. Okay, motion made by Nate and seconded by Chad. Any more discussion? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Sutherland.
Yes.
Sweeney.
Yes.
Schwabs.
Yes.
Merrill.
Yes.
Solberg.
Yes.
Schlue.
Yes.
Erdman.
Yes.
Summerfeld.
Yes.
Luther.
Yes.
Traxler.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That brings us down to six D, establishing polling locations for the November election. Discussion and possible motion approving. Kelly, I'll let you bring us up to speed on that.
We have to establish our polling places because they are different from what our ordinance says for this election. So wards one and two will be at Christ Lutheran Church. Three and four and five and seven will be in the multipurpose room at Stout.
So Kelly, that's a change, so that's the big.
Yes, that's a change. They have been at the leisure center for the elections this year.
So the multipurpose is what we would normally call the fieldhouse, it's in the track area, lack of better words.
Six and eight and nine will be at the leisure center, and 10 and 11 will be at CVTC.
Okay, thank you, Kelly, for the update. If anybody'd like to have a question or make a motion, now would be the time to do so. Okay, Lee Schwabs, you got your hand up?
Yeah, I'll make a motion approving the polling locations as presented.
Okay, thank you, Lee. Nate, you got your hand up?
Yes, I would like to second Lee's motion.
Okay, motion been made and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor of said motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, thank you. That brings us down to six E, the budget transfers, including the year-end transfers. Mr. Prangie?
So included in your pack was the two, 2019 year-end budget transfers. It's been kind of a slow process, and we've had some change in staffing, etc., and working with the auditors. But we've, do this annually, we come through, we're putting some money in contingency from unanticipated revenue sources and in other accounts. And bottom line, this puts us in balance with the general fund budget from last year, which then will go to a final document, which will be released in about two weeks. So if you have questions about those, there's nothing. We just have to move some dollars around, we don't have to move them all around in every account. So while we did have salaries with the fire there, some of that was, we did have two retirements, being a fire chief and another one that had additional expenses there. So that's why we chose a couple of those, and fuel was over last year, etc., etc. So if you have specific questions, I can try and answer those. Otherwise, it'd be a motion to approve is what we would be requesting, and then they would be incorporated into our 2019 budget that will be put together, finalized then.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Prangie. Any questions for Mr. Prangie or staff? Does anybody like to make a motion to approve year-end budget transfers? Mary, go ahead, please.
I would like to make a motion approving the 2019 year-end budget transfers.
Is that correct? Motion is correct, okay. Thank you, Mary. Is there a second to that motion? Ryland Erdman, you got your hand up?
I'll second Mary's motion.
Okay, very good. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Sweeney.
Yeah.
Schwabs.
Yes.
Merrill.
Yes.
Solberg.
Yes.
Schlue.
Yes.
Erdman.
Yes.
Summerfeld.
Yes.
Luther.
Yes.
Traxler.
Yes.
Sutherland.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That brings us down to the mayor's report. I'll keep it brief. There's a really nice sign down, the rain garden sign down by Lakeside Boat Landing. There's a picture of it in your pack. For the audience, if they can see it, but it's, it's very nice. Tanner Menomen Lake Association, UW Stout, Rotary, 3M, Excel Energy, City Menominee, all sponsored the rain garden and work that was done down there, so very nice sign, that was pretty cool. The Public Works Building is looking really good. I was down there and checked it out. The old building, including the new building, is all sprayed gray and looks great. The cement is all laid. I think that's going to be a great addition. The sewer plant also is, is really making headway and coming right along. Also, the city sign, the city, the city building sign along Ninth Street and Wilson, looks like it's coming along nicely also, so that's pretty exciting. I can't think of anything else for the mayor's report. Lowell?
Kevin, you want to give us an update on the milling? Did they get most of that done today, do you know?
Main Street?
Yeah, WK was in today and milled both Main Street and Oak Street portion. Probably the pavement's going to go down next week is what it's looking like, so yeah, it's going to be a pretty short, short project.
And, and what you're talking about is right, Main Street from the co-op, a couple blocks east, and then also on Oak Avenue up by, on the way to Fleet Farm, correct? Yes. And, and just for, just for everybody's information too, they are widening out Oak Street up there on the way to Fleet Farm, the cutoff by a quick trip there, so that you will be able to have two lanes turning out onto Broadway or North Broadway. Sometimes people get congested there, and you know, there's, won't quite make it. So we are widening that out, and will be a right turn lane offered there as well, so that's, that's a good improvement. I will open it up for communication from council or staff. Go ahead, Mr. Eddie.
We did, in the council's packet, we did put a position description on the environmental program coordinator. That's dovetailed to the recycling program and, and stormwater and energy that we brought to the council before, so we brought it, put it in the packet for any input from the council. We're looking to fill that position in the near future, but.
Sooner than later.
Sooner than later, with everything going on with recycling, and then we got some stormwater stuff coming up. But we, again, if the council has any questions on it, we, Lowell, I would be glad to try to answer those if you have them, but we're pressing ahead to try to fill that position.
Good, thank you, Mr. Eddie, Mr. Prangie. Council, any other communications? Okay, then we can move on down to claims. So if we want to pay the bills, now is the time to make a motion to do so. There is a.
I think it was revision number three.
Okay, there's a revised claims list in front of you this evening, so if you'd like to take a look at that. Anybody want to make a motion to approve the claims list? Mary Solberg, you've got your hand up?
I would make a motion to approve the revised number three claims list as presented.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second to that motion? Rob and Sweeney, you've got your hand up?
I'll second Mary's motion.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Schwabs.
Yes.
Merrill.
Yes.
Solberg.
Yes.
Schlue.
Yes.
Erdman.
Yes.
Summerfeld.
Yes.
Luther.
Yes.
Traxler.
Yes.
Sutherland.
Yes.
Sweeney.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Uh, that moves us down to licenses, uh, normal license list. So no, uh, no changes in that. So if anybody'd like to make a motion to approve the normal license list, now is the time to do so.
I'll make a motion to approve the license list.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second to that? Nate, go ahead, please.
I'll second Ryland's motion.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, no closed session tonight and, uh, a motion to adjourn would be appropriate. Nate, go ahead, please.
I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
All right, motion adjourned by Nate Merrill. Is there a second to that motion? Jeff Luther, go ahead, please.
I'll second Nate's motion to adjourn.
Okay, uh, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, thank you very much, everybody. Have a good night and thank you, everybody.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
You guys.
Thank you.